Here we go, everybody. So, I would like to open the Georgetown Planning Board meeting for August 22nd, 2018, Memorial Town Hall. We're in the third floor conference room. It's a hair after seven. We have minutes, four vouchers, five items of correspondence, two which are directly applicable to us. The others are from a budding towns. One public hearing, Healthy Farms. And then we have four items under Planning Office to go over. So, with that, if we could go to the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the draft meeting minutes for the one August 2018 Planning Board meeting as written.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion has been made and it has been seconded to approve the meeting minutes for August 1st, 2018. Any discussion?
I have one question, and that's following line 26. It's kind of in the introduction. We agreed to notify Parks and Rec to have a team that's professional. Did we communicate with Parks and Rec? Has that been?
Yes, yep.
Have we got, do we know what they're gonna do?
They're not gonna do that.
They're working now with the Board of Selectmen, trying to figure out what the next step is actually gonna be.
Okay. So, they didn't engage Gale already?
That's what they still plan on doing, from what I hear.
You have to remember, it's sort of like when that first changeover happened, when we went from that first engineer to Gale. Engineers don't like to work with other engineers' plans, so...
The first engineer to Gale?
Yeah, the first.
Who was before that?
Before that was, I forget the name of it.
Oh, it was always Gale.
No.
No, there was one before that. It was Lou Melvin. I forget the name of the, I forget the name of the actual company.
Oh, right, right, right. Ludwig, right.
But because Louis stamped all the plans, Gale stepped in and Gale said, "Well, that's very good, but we're gonna charge you all this much more money."
Right, as they need to.
As any other company would do.
Yeah.
So, I think that's why they're, well, they probably love to work with BSC, as professional as they are. They're probably looking at maybe a $30,000 price tag to swap over midstream now.
Yeah, no, I think, and this is where this message, and I'm confident that we talked or that I spoke very clearly about, the intent behind this was not to switch to a new agent to design the project. It was to get someone like Larry Graham or BSC to help them pull together the contract with Gale, to be the owner's rep with Gale, to avoid everything and the errors that have transpired in the past because they need some help. Larry couldn't do it.
Couldn't do it, yeah.
So, that's when BSC was mentioned and put on the table. And so, this was about not going and changing courses in the middle of the race. It was about hiring them as a consultant to shepherd them through the process. Has that, perhaps the fact that the question's being asked, has that message not maybe gone through to them?
Nah, really what's happening is, you know, you have the summertime and...
Understood.
Yeah, they're still trying to figure out how they're going to get from where they are today to finishing this project.
Okay.
You know, they're working with the Board of Selectmen and trying to, you know, figure things out, basically. Is that the gist you are getting from...
That's what I'm hearing, you know, and basically, I mean, the one thing that we really, really need, my understanding is they wanted to put out a bid for the parking area and the rain garden and the restoration of all of the wetland restoration that needs to be done for...
Bid for the construction?
Pardon?
Or the design?
For final, no, no, the, those plans are already done. We've already approved them.
Yep.
What they're looking for is for someone, Gale, to put out the bid, say contractors, how much to do this, this, and this.
Okay, so for construction, yeah.
And, you know, beyond that, once that finally happens, then that can, that area can get done. What I was hoping was that they would come together and find out from, once those are done, in addition to those, what else needs to be done to complete this, so that we can get a price tag on it. And once we get a price tag on it, then we can go about finding the money. And once you find the money, then they can finally bid that out.
Yeah, until...
But for right now, those three aspects.
Until they can open the gate and, and people can use it, it is, I mean, it's a white elephant.
Yeah, well, those three aspects have to be done. I mean, you need a parking area.
So, I, so I, so I appreciate the selectmen trying to help them work this out, and this is no dispersions on the selectmen, but it seems like the Planning Board is the board to try to help them work this out. And maybe the communications didn't get through, that the way to help them work this out is not for the Planning Board to do the work, but for them to engage someone like BSC to take them by the hand through the process and be the owner's representative, dealing directly with Gale, so that somebody is always there, can always make the meetings, consistency of, of the process, and avoid all of the mistakes and redos of the past. So, I guess I'm a little not understanding what the selectmen are trying to work out with all best intentions. I understand that.
Is it the selectmen or is it the fact that Mike Farrell was the administrator for the selectmen?
Yeah.
Is the procurement officer and all of that needs to pass through his desk before Gale could ever get hired?
That could be.
That might be part of it, but I'm just, you know, throwing that out.
Yeah, plus they, they don't have the money established right now to move forward. So, that's...
Right.
So, they have to, you think?
Again, it, it depends upon what that, that price tag for the parking lot, the wetland restoration, and the rain garden is. Remember, the, those three are very, very closely related because you're not gonna do the wetland restoration until you start building your...
Your parking lot and rain garden?
Your rain garden. You have to be in there first, do your restoration, then do your rain garden, then do your parking lot. Because if you don't, what's gonna happen is your rain, if you're partially done with your parking lot and it rains, boom, you're gonna impact the wetland.
So, what you're referring to, too, is really what is needed is a project manager.
Correct.
Right.
And so, if, if we could relay that to the selectmen, if they're going to take the reins of this, because none of them are familiar with construction as far as my knowledge is, so I think you should request that.
I think that's really the point. I think that's what I was trying to get at. And, and maybe we could authorize John to simply send a memo to the selectmen saying, you know, "Planning Board is recommending strongly that Park and Rec, as part of this project, hires a professional project manager to represent them, to represent the town in this process." Now, I, I know everybody's gonna say, and rightly so, that's gonna cost more money.
Sure.
But it's the cost of doing business, I think, one, two. There've been so many, I think, expenses that have been created by not doing it correct. I would venture to guess that we would save money doing it this way.
We reduce risk by doing that.
Most certainly.
And I think that's, that's the, I mean, there's a significant risk of the project getting out of hand.
So, with the board...
Without having somebody just, just scrutinizing.
There, I see you're kind of...
The only, the only caveat to that is process again. I mean, we're, we're at the point here where looking to have the procurement officer approve and forward a contract with Gale, but before that would happen, then you, you're asking for a procurement officer to get the bid process going for...
A project manager.
A project manager, and then you're not gonna have the money because it's really close right now.
Well, that would be like a part-time job.
The other thing that, the other thing that is taking place, the bids that came in for the parking lot were a lot higher than what was anticipated, so...
What, what were those, you know?
I don't know specifically. I just heard they were, they were a lot...
More than they had.
The sum was a lot, yeah.
Well, right now is, and as each day goes by, it's, all construction's getting more and more expensive, you know, it's just, people are just so damn busy and costs are just going through the roof right now.
When I looked at those bids, I could see that. It was, they were pie in the sky. Yeah, how bad do you want this? Yeah, we'll bid it, share.
Yeah.
Yeah, here's the number. You like it?
If I get that...
You really, really want it, kids? Go for it.
Well, this, I think, just putting an ad out there, I think there's a lot of construction people in town that could do a project manager for a park. I mean, we're not looking for Olympic Park.
I guess, I guess...
I don't think you can.
Perhaps, perhaps the memo is then not, see, this is this problem with the way communications happens.
Right.
This, perhaps the project manager to help to be sitting at the table with Park and Rec, perhaps he doesn't come on board till after Gale puts out these documents to get construction costs. Maybe that's what the memo is about, that the Planning Board strongly recommends that once the prices come in, that Park and Rec...
Then go out and get Park and Rec.
Then, then goes and gets a project manager, professional project manager.
Yeah, that would be good.
And it's just a recommendation.
That's it.
To the selectmen.
Yeah, that's simple.
Isn't that what Gale's supposed to be doing? Isn't that part of it?
I thought it was done.
Well, it is, it is, but you have to know, you have to know what you're doing with Gale.
You need a representative of the town, I think.
Who knows what they're doing.
Yeah.
And has the time to devote to it, however.
It has the time, yeah, that, it's a time.
The time is the big issue.
Yeah.
The time is the big issue.
It's huge, it's huge, yeah.
It's probably everything, right?
Somebody, somebody retired, you know, that, that looking for a part-time job. I mean, I think that, I think they're out there.
Or a good volunteer, a really, really good volunteer.
So, perhaps...
No volunteer.
Retired engineer.
Those days are gone.
Well, just thinking of the money, I don't know.
To try to wrap up that, would the board be comfortable with John sending a memo to the selectmen saying, you know, "Once, once the, once the construction prices come in on the park, the Planning Board strongly recommends that Park and Rec engage a professional project manager for the implementation of the next phase of work." And it's just a recommendation and then we've done it.
And maybe drop by at their latest, less next convenient, when, when it's convenient. I mean, I'm, I'm piecemealing a lot of this together.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
A lot of this is conjecture on my part here, too. So, I mean, to actually get it from the board numbers...
They're gonna have to come back here.
Oh, yeah.
Like to invite them.
So, let's make it easy for them.
Technically, they don't.
And that's, I think this is a way to make it easy for them.
Technically, they don't have to come back here.
I really feel sorry for them if they have to, if Park and Rec has to make another appeal to the CBA or town meeting for more money. I just feel sorry for them how their residents are gonna approach that.
So, we're still on the first item in the agenda, meeting minutes?
Oh, wow.
Bob, it was an excellent question and an important one.
I knew better than to ask anymore, even though I have a couple here.
Anything else?
There are a bunch of things that are Tilly's fault. I mean, the Tilly raised that are good, no, they're good.
Just blaming you, Bob.
One was updating the town code and wondering if there's been any progress on that, if there's a way forward, and also the downtown septic analysis. Those are things that I, we're kind of interested in. The others, I think, are in the agenda.
Is it, is it, I'm sorry, are those in the minutes that need corrections?
Yes, it's a question.
Page four.
If there's a way forward, because it, all it says is, "Issue was raised."
What, what number, where are you?
158 on page four.
Page four, 158.
Number four.
Changing town code, yeah.
Right. It just says, "This was raised, this was raised, this was raised, this was raised, this was raised."
Okay.
And I'm wondering, is there a way, have we, do we have a way forward? Did I just forget?
No, no.
Oh, good.
No, I carried through on that one, and what happened was, from our last meeting, I went to talk to Janet and tried to schedule to be on a Board of Selectmen meeting, and the earliest they'll be able to get on to their agenda is their next meeting.
Awesome.
It didn't work for their most recent meeting, because Mike wasn't allowed, so...
Yeah, summertime.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then the other question you had...
The other one was about downtown septic analysis.
Yeah. Unfortunately, I'm still waiting to get the final report from the engineer. The summers really get people out there.
Yeah.
They'll all show up after Labor Day.
You didn't pay them yet.
No, no.
Does anyone else have any corrections? Okay, so I'm seeing no more discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Four yes, one absent. Vouchers, there are four. I can get someone to...
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve a voucher for the Mass Economic Development Council event registration, $40.
Second.
Motion has been made and it's been seconded to approve the voucher to Mass Economic Development Council in the amount of $40. Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the voucher for Joseph Merritt.
These smell great. There's like perfume on them.
How lovely.
Just pointing out, this is good. This is good stuff.
Cool.
Yeah.
Be that as it may, I move to approve the voucher for Joseph Merritt, fiscal '19 service contract for HP Platter, $1,044.75.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion has been made and it's been seconded to approve the voucher to Joseph Merritt and Company for HP Platter annual service contract in the amount of $1,044.75. Any discussion?
Just a quick question for John. John, that's total package, right?
Yeah, that's...
Ink, paper, blah, 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 blah. We need nothing?
It's, yeah, for the annual maintenance costs, and, you know, for instance, we have, we had him in today, Merritt, tuned up on it.
But basically, you hit click and you don't hear a hum, and nothing comes out. You pick up the phone.
Yep.
He makes it hum.
All labor materials taken care of.
Does it include him?
I don't believe it on, no, no, but it's all labor materials. And the, and the problem is, if you have a problem and you don't, you're not on a maintenance program...
You're not gonna get him.
Yeah. You're gonna have to evaluate it.
Try to get somebody else.
And we'll get to you the first of the year.
No, so just buy a new one.
Any, any questions, Kevin?
Yeah, you can do that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four yes, one absent.
And the other thing is, you can't operate without one.
Right. Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the voucher for Staples Office Supplies at $84.95.
Second, Mr. Jim.
Motion has been made and it's been seconded to approve the voucher to Staples for office supplies in the amount of $84.95. Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four yes, one absent.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the voucher for HL Graham Associates, 198 East Main Street, $290, $295.
Second, Mr. Jim.
Motion has been made and it's been seconded to approve the voucher to HL Graham Associates for work associated with 198 East Main Street in the amount of $295. Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four yes, one absent. Okay. Vouchers. Two yes. One, two. One more, Tilly. Thank you. Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
Can I make a motion or make a suggestion, whether we go through, postpone the correspondence or consider it as read and go right to the public hearing?
Sounds like a good idea. Board all, on board with that?
Are you unanimous consent?
Are you unanimous consent? Sounds good. So, with that, we're going to move into the public hearing for Healthy Farms, if you guys are so ready. And I guess what we'll do is, you know, John will just give a quick overview. You guys can say what it is you want to talk about, and then any questions.
Okay, all right. So, for tonight's hearing that we have here, did everybody get a copy of the addendum? That was on top of the comments report for this item. And what the addendum cites is that we were expecting a traffic analysis for the projection, projection of the increased traffic associated with the additional use of this facility that is now medical, will become retail with all the permits being acquired. So, I got the traffic analysis today, which is, you know, boo-boo when it comes to the Planning Board wanting to learn this stuff.
I understand.
So, if the board does not want to deal with that, you know, they know the rules. I've already explained it to them. You know, getting a traffic study today for a hearing tonight, and board not having that information, you know, it's, you can probably talk about it, but...
What I would like to do with that is not get into discussion about it, but can you give a two-sentence overview, like the executive summary of the traffic?
Yeah, yeah. It's, I don't want to sound like a traffic engineer, but the traffic, projected traffic increase is negligible from what the original use of the property was, that is, prior to the medical marijuana facility. The total daily vehicle trips traveled to and from that site was 499. The present use of the property generates in the neighborhood of 400. With the additional retail, it's going to, projected to have 567 vehicle trips per day. So, that's a 68 vehicle per day increase from the previous use once removed. So, the original use at 499, this is projected with the retail in the medical marijuana being associated and sold at the property. You'll have a 68 vehicle increase from what was approved originally for this site. But you're in the 400-plus vehicle neighborhood now, so you're, you're increasing what you're projected increase. And they actually had, they, they related some, some studies, traffic studies, associated with other retail marijuana operations in other states.
Okay.
So, even though it's not yet an item listed in the engineer's traffic manual, it will soon be in the addendum packet for that.
Okay.
I'm sure.
So, what, what, will you affirm those numbers again, please?
Five, they're projecting 567 total daily. Right now, they're in the 400 vehicles per day. The original use of the property, what it was built for, that traffic study projected a, a total build out in vehicle trips per day of 499.
So, only 167 more just for recreational?
That's...
And 400 for medical?
So, here, so, so what I want to avoid is getting into the discussion about it, because we haven't seen the report yet.
Right.
So, I just wanted to give an overview, and then we're all gonna get the report and we're gonna be able to have this discussion.
We're gonna get that in the next session, right?
Yeah, that would be good.
That's, that's really it, in a nutshell. It's negligible when you think about it.
Yeah. So, if you could then just sort of give an overview for the public in terms of what we're doing tonight?
Yeah, so what we're doing tonight, we're holding the public hearing, the Planning Board is the special permitting authority...
Mr. Chairman, I'm very sorry, point of procedure, should I make a motion to open the public hearing?
As soon as you said that, I just wanted to...
Yeah, well, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
And consider the public notice as read.
Motion has been made and seconded to open the public hearing for Healthy Farms, public hearing on special permit. Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
The notice as read, has it been read?
No, consider it as read.
Consider it as read, the board comfortable with that?
Yeah.
Board comfortable with that?
Well, there was a question about town council about that ad. When I, when I read the...
Well, then, if there's a question, John, could, could you read the...
It wasn't a question about the ad, it was, you know, a question about whether or not the ASBIL plan that was submitted for the medical marijuana use and that was permitted in 2016, if the ASBIL plan that was submitted could be used as the site plan for this application. Now, in the emails that went back and forth between myself and town council, at the end of all the emails, yes, the ASBIL plan could be used and for the date to be updated, which the date has been updated.
So, this isn't about the ad?
Yes, it is. Well, I'm questioning the ad because there's a, there's a memo from John Eichmann to Les, I think, and he was stating that on, what is it, page two of back of the application D, D packet, there's some memos back and forth from Les and John Eichmann. And on the second page, it says, "The fact that the new bylaw classifies both medical and recreational marijuana facilities as marijuana businesses and applies the same criteria to each use does not mean that the existing permit covers recreational marijuana establishments, as it plainly does not. And medical and recreational marijuana facilities remain separately defined uses, uses under the new bylaw." But when you read the, the application and the ad, he keeps requiring a marijuana business request. And what I got from Jonathan Eichmann is that it should have said recreational marijuana.
It says retail marijuana establishment.
Can you read that ad?
I think...
I'll read the...
Public hearing notice, Georgetown Planning Board, in accordance with the provision of Georgetown's zoning bylaws, Article 18, Paragraph 165, 156, and 165-158, Planning Board will hold a public hearing on a special permit petition calling to amend the previously approved special permit for Healthy Farms at 401 East Main Street, Georgetown, Mass. Said public hearing will be held on 22 August 2018 at 7:00 p.m., third floor meeting room, Georgetown Town Hall, 1 Library Street, Georgetown, Mass. The proposed amendment calls for the following marijuana businesses to operate on said premises. One, Tier IV indoor cultivator marijuana establishment. Two, retail marijuana establishment. And three, manufacturing marijuana establishment. The subject property is located in the marijuana business overlay district, MBOD, as shown on the town zoning map and depicted on the town's accessory map, 14 as Lot 4. Full and complete copies of the above cited special permit application are available for review in the office of the town clerk and the planning office. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the above cited special permit application should appear at the time and place designated herein. Please note, written correspondence will be accepted and read into the record of the hearing. Persons needing special accommodation should contact Georgetown Planning Department. John Cashell, Town Planner.
So, I, I'm not, I guess I'm not following.
No, well, the, these are, these memos are dated, if I could, Mr. Chairman, the memos that Tilly is referring to, those were dated July 3rd of this year. The public, and those have to do with Les trying to determine exactly what the permit process is for this proposed use in accordance with our bylaw that was passed at annual town meeting. So, the public hearing notice, the publishing date was August 3rd, and the second notice was August 10th. What he's making reference to has nothing to do with the public hearing notice whatsoever. It has to do with the determination of zoning. Les had to determine what they needed to do to properly apply in accordance with the zoning laws. That's what that has to do with.
Well, so, I guess that's why I was confused, so I, I do understand what you said.
It is confusing, yeah.
So, the issue that you're concerned about, Tilly, will still be discussed, but it's not gonna do what you...
Evidently, there was a discrepancy on rather to have a site approval as well as the permit for the business. What I, what I found confusing is that it wasn't marijuana business. I don't remember that ever being in our bylaw as such.
Okay, so, okay, so, if you can hold on to those questions, what I'd like to do is I'd like to finish with John to, you know, give the overview, what we're here for tonight.
but it's not going to do what you...
Evidently, there was a discrepancy on rather to have a site approval as well as the permit for the business. What I, what I found confusing is that it wasn't marijuana business. I don't remember that ever being in our bylaw as such.
Okay, so if you can hold on to those questions, what I'd like to do is I'd like to finish with John to, you know, give the overview of what we're here for tonight.
Okay.
And then we'll go to the people at the desk and then we'll bring it to the board.
Okay, good. So in addition to this public hearing that we're holding tonight and what has been scheduled and advertised for, they have already acquired a host agreement with the Board of Selectmen, which is a state requirement. They've also had their community outreach public hearing that they're responsible for. That's a self-administered public hearing process that they have to meet in accordance with the state statute on the recreational marijuana use for their site. So they've had that. They're going through that whole state permitting process. Now, ultimately, it leads to this planning board making a decision on the special permit slash site plan approval for the proposed use. Once that is accomplished, they're still dealing with the state for getting final approval. And then, you know, ultimately, as we discussed at the last meeting, they cannot open their doors to retail sales of marijuana until such time as the state is satisfied that everything's done. And as, if you're following the news recently, it was just announced last night that the state finally has a testing facility of which any marijuana that's going to be sold, legally sold, has to pass muster with the testing facility as being safe. So that is a major achievement in this entire process. So that, you know, there's, they're going to be controls that, you know, this stuff is safe in accordance with the growing requirements and standards. And that you're not just getting what's out there in the street, which, you know, has proven lethal in many instances throughout the country recently.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, that was just, fentanyl was sprinkled all over marijuana.
Oh, I'm sure.
Yeah, it was a seventy-six people OD'd.
That was synthetic marijuana.
Yeah, yeah, whatever it was, but I mean, that's what can happen.
So our, so our role tonight is...
Our role tonight is to have the initial public hearing conducted and, you know, and see how far along we can go with making a determination. You know, as I did put in the staff report for tonight's meeting, I think I put every attachment we need to make reference to the previous medical marijuana permit that was granted by this board. The actual statute that was passed at annual town meeting, that's in effect now. I put together a lot of other materials later on associated with what we want to do in developing regulations for the, that would go along with the bylaw that was passed. So that's part of the discussion later in the meeting. I happen to do so much with this.
I just have a quick procedural question, Mr. Chairman. I saw, I get it. You, right now, you have a valid special permit for a medical marijuana dispensary. I get that. From everything that I'm reading, from what we're putting out here, we are now taking that special permit and we're modifying it. But what I'm not seeing is through that modification where we're still allowing the medical side of it. I'm not seeing that in the paperwork. I'm not seeing it reflected in the draft conditions. And I'm just wondering where that goes and if it should be reiterated in the modification.
That may, that may be better explained by the applicant, if I missed it, Mr. Chairman, but it is actually within, because what you're adding to is the retail end of things. It doesn't eradicate what's already going on there, it just adds to it. And that's, that's within the permit. And it makes reference to the previous permitted use and the previous approved site plan. There's reference in the decision, the draft decision.
Yes, yes.
That was prepared for tonight's meeting as a just in case we got that far. But more, more so that, you know what? Let's try to progress this thing tonight to figure out what we need to do to put the final Ts and cross, dot the Is, you know.
That's what I thought it was for. So we can have a chance to review it and potentially tweak it a little bit before we actually decided if we wanted to approve it.
Again, there's no rush to this stuff. This is our first, first ballgame.
So with that, gentlemen, if you could reintroduce yourself for the record, that would be greatly appreciated.
Paul Overgag, CFO of Healthy Farms Inc. in Georgetown.
Nathaniel Leroy, Executive Director, Healthy Farms in Georgetown.
Good evening, board. Thanks for having this hearing. I appreciate it. Middle of the summer, nice and quiet here. Everybody's relaxed, that's good. We are hoping to open the four oh one East Main Street facility for recreational adult-use marijuana. It's a very confusing process because we have a brand-new state CCC department that barely knows, you know, who's working there, who's not working there. We have regulations that come out on a daily basis that we have to adhere to. But the simplest way to look at it is that there is two ways or two different roads that need to be traveled in order to get this thing permitted. One is the state, and they have to give you your final approval. Part of the final approval is a new certificate of occupancy for this new business that the town council has ordered, the town selectmen has decided to put in the zoning. That it is a new business that's called a marijuana retail business. And that's the process we're trying to obtain here. Is that in order for Les to give us a certificate of occupancy, which we have to show to the state at final approval, we have to get on the back of the cart all the signatures. One of the signatures is planning board. Part of the reason why there was such a lengthy discussion before we filed for this application is because we, between everybody downstairs, we couldn't figure out, what are we going to do? Do we need to come to the planning board? Because we, or is it a matter of just paperwork? So out of the discussion came, let's just go in front of the planning board. Let's just do it the way we agree we're going to do it and no shortcuts, no this and that. So that's part of the reason why we're here. The site plan is not changing. It's just a change of use within the building. So that's what we're here to work on. And I understand that the application is not complete, so we're not going to have a final decision tonight. But if we can make a homework list that we can work on over the next three weeks and let's see if we can stay ahead of everything and get this done.
Okay. With that, Harry, do you, do you want to begin with the questions that you were starting to...
Yeah, just one that just came up. I wasn't aware that the Cannabis Control Commission was propagated new regulations. I know they came out with them.
There are, there are clarifications that are being, they're not actually new regulations there, like...
Explanations.
Yeah, yeah.
Information guideline...
And maybe it's not daily, but it's frequent and we're, we're still trying to... A lot of them are still on the application process itself, you know. This is what we mean by this. And so there's guidances coming up.
I thought I missed something. Wow, I thought I was keeping up, but I get busy, you know. Couple of quick questions. A lot of them, and I don't know if we want to look at the site plan portion of this or if we want to go to... And before I even start talking, is, 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 are any members of the public, do they want to... I don't even know if members of the public want to speak or...
We can check now. We can check now. Is there anyone from the public who would like to, if you could introduce yourself to the...
Brian Kleiner. And I just want to say that opening up the retail side of it is really important. One of the concerns I have as a concealed carry holder is if I were to get my medical license, I put that at risk. So, you know, there's people out there that need their medicine and, you know, they're, they're dealing with that dilemma. You know, do I put my license at risk and get a medical permit? Or do we wait for retail? So, you know, basically, I'd say I'd like to see it sooner rather than later.
Thank you.
Back to you, Harry.
Okay. Most of my questions...
Can you, can you follow, excuse me, can you follow up on this, gentlemen? It's two different, can you explain that to them? It's two different potents. Medical is different than recreational.
He, he just wants to see this happen sooner rather than later. That's his function.
Oh, it sounded to me like you want the recreation, so then you don't have to do the medical.
No, so I, I personally don't need it for medical.
I, I didn't...
But I'm just saying in general, there are people out there that have the permits. And if you were to get a medical license federally, you're putting that at risk, right?
How are you putting...
So that's just a whole other discussion that really has nothing to do with this.
Right, it's separate. I'm just saying, as, as concerned as I am for it, I'd like to see it happen.
Yep. You, you got what you need? To say what you meant, okay. All right.
Is it appropriate to look at the site plan at this point?
Sure, you can start wherever you want.
Okay, I'm just looking at the site plan and without actually looking at it, I can see that, well, maybe what I need to do is get that clarification that you are still going to be doing recreational. You're going to be doing recreational retail, but you are still going to be doing medical.
Yeah, sure.
Okay, and great that that's pulled up. I noticed that the underlying owner of the property is now three brothers or something.
It's always been.
It has always been? Okay, so I was under the impression you guys were leasing this.
Healthy Farms is...
Healthy Farms is leasing. And that that top portion, there was a certain large area that you weren't using.
You're talking about the dotted line area at the very, very top of the screen?
I think we're drawing this, we're drawing this, yeah.
Yes, that is what we call the expansion space.
The expansion space. You're not using that, right?
A little bit of storage, but not anything for manufacturing.
Okay, so you are using that?
No, we're not.
I'm hearing two separate things.
It has, it has a branch in it and it has a forklift in it, and that's it.
So it is being used?
We go in there, yes.
It's not being used for any manufacturing purposes.
Not for marijuana purposes.
Well, we consider that used if you're going to use storage or shelves or keep equipment. That's use.
Because the, the old plan clearly said not to be used and was not going to be used for future use only. And my concern is this. This is a beautiful plan, it's lovely, it's very clean line drawings. It's an as-built and, and that's all well and good. But, you know, John's taking great trouble to make sure that the police, the fire chief, other, other boards have gone and reviewed this plan. And those folks are saying, this is fine, we've already done our review. But they're not aware of the fact that this has changed, that that's being used. And the other thing that they're not aware of is...
They have walked through those areas.
They have, but with the intent that you weren't going to be using it.
At the annual inspection a couple of months ago, the, the forklift was sitting there and the travel was sitting there.
Okay, I, I'd just like verification of that, that they are aware that this is being used. And I don't see how, from that drawing, you're going to do your separation where medical is on this side and it's separated physically from the retail side.
That's, we need a clarification for you where the separation, the, both businesses, or both medical and recreational can happen in the same space with the separation of a stanchion.
At point of sale.
At point of sale.
Really?
There's different checkout lines. The medical folks can use either line, but the recreational can't use the medical line.
So there's no physical separation other than...
So there's no physical separation, there's, there is no...
Something like a movie theater.
There is, there is no...
A velvet rope?
There is, yeah, a velvet rope.
Literally what they're talking about.
Okay.
There is no construction required to use the same space they were using now for both uses or if we want to use the proper word, for retail marijuana sales.
Okay, okay. I, I just wanted to make sure that there wasn't any actual physical changing going on in the building. You're going to be putting up some stanchions and...
Stanchions, a couple of signs, medical sales only, recreational sales.
Great, great. So there's no, there's no physical change to the building in any way there. Okay, and everybody's aware, everybody that signed off on all those letters that we received that said, everything's been checked out, that's all set because they've seen that new area being used.
Yeah, so I, I, my apology that I didn't know the word use was if you walk in there, you're using it.
Well, if you're storing...
That's it.
...equipment in it, you're...
You could sum that up.
You're using it, I guess.
I, I'm sorry, I was not aware of that definition.
People can disagree on, or, you know, misunderstand one another.
Why aren't you going to? Can we ask questions or just let him finish?
Well, what I'd like to do is, is let Harry finish with his and then we can go to you, Tilly.
Well, we're on this separation.
On this separation issue?
Yeah, yeah. I, I, you know, as we just was talking about, there's two separate potents in this marijuana. I think it definitely should be separated. I think there should be a wall between the two operations.
To, to what end?
Because the medical is the different breed than the other in a sense. It's a total different...
Well, let my partner, let my partner enlighten you a little bit on that.
So there is, for example, with edibles, there's a limit on what the potency can be for recreational, which is allowed to be much higher for medical. We do different labeling for these products and you have to scan these labels at the point of sale so you can't like accidentally give someone the wrong thing. But you're also using it to track your inventory and all this other stuff. The actual marijuana, like if you buy, like what people consider these flower or buds, is the same marijuana.
But they're getting a different chemical section of the plant for one compared to the other.
I don't think that's entirely true. The, the, the medical population may be looking for different effects. They may want something with low THC and high CBD, you know, but that's, that's not always what they need. Sometimes they need higher THC and maybe that's the same type of product that a recreational person is looking for. So in some sense, you know, there may be some strains that medical populations are looking for more frequently, but there is overlap there too.
So in other words, we have a strain called Sour Diesel. It is a one-gram package of flour and it has twenty-five THC in it that will be available for the recreational customer and for the medical customer. Same item. A chocolate chip cookie with ten milligrams of THC in it will only be available for the medical customer because the recreational customer can only buy with five milligrams of THC. Same with a chocolate bar, same with... But the more pure the product, the more it's available to both markets. It's when we process it, that's when we can start separating the items.
Concentrate.
Concentration, yeah.
You do maintain a separate inventory, but those inventories are controlled by the software systems called seed-to-sale tracking systems that we already...
Can you, can you give me some documents to show what you're saying? Because I really, everything I've read said, said what I'm saying.
Well, throughout the Cannabis Control Commission, they talk about using seed-to-sale tracking software for the separation of inventories. But I can find that for you and send it to you.
Would you, would you like information about the seed-to-sale tracking? Or would you like to have a better idea of how the items work? You know, this is available to this guy and this guy. And where does the difference come in? We can look that up.
Yeah, that would be helpful.
That would go to John as part of getting in the next package.
Seven days before, please.
Everything else that I have to deal with deals with the decision. Maybe that's something we want to backtrack around.
Yep, I think so, yep.
Here and there about working and et cetera.
Agreed, yep.
My question was really answered by Harry in terms of separating at the point of sale. I'm really quite satisfied with, with the way this is playing out. Do you have any sense, do you have any sense of how long it might take the CCC to flesh? It's, it's crazy. I mean, they said by the end of the year, but they didn't say what...
Said July first for approvals. But, you know, I really don't have a great sense of that. I think it... I think it, you know, the provisional might come in another three months and then they have multiple steps beyond that. And I, I think it's next year sometime.
Would you be able to open the doors on a provisional?
No, no, you have to have final approval.
So the provisional is like, doesn't mean.
It means that they are on track of approving it.
The CCC has written a timeline for an applicant and the timeline is two hundred and sixty-six days. Now, because we're an existing operator and we have what they call fast track review, part of the two hundred and sixty-six days is an architectural review. We're already open.
Right.
And this is, this is why I'm saying the whole DP agent CCC working together. There is no glue right now between those two departments.
It's the invention of a new industry.
Yeah.
And, and a new department and state of Massachusetts and.
They don't wanna screw it up. They've seen other states and they're trying to figure it out. I'm glad I'm not doing that.
So I'm, I'm optimistically projecting January.
Cool.
For you.
Thank you.
I'm still, I'm still in the.
Indeed.
Uh, you know, um, one of the things that I've been wanting to know, and that is your problem with pesticides. How did that happen and what are you doing to prevent it?
I'm gonna give this to my friend Nat who has dealt with it throughout the whole process with the state. We got clearance from the state that everything is perfect. We are one of their favorite facilities. Ever since we got the reopening, they have yet to have to come visit us versus other places they go every two weeks. They have great confidence in what we do in Georgetown. We grow a fantastic product with a lot of happy customers and it was a stupid mistake. And he'll go into that.
Nice segue. Go for it.
Uh, we had used a pesticide in an area without plants that, uh, you know, we had seen pests coming in in the fall and we wanted to make sure that they weren't gonna get into our production areas. The really big mistake we used, we shouldn't have used that pesticide first of all, but second of all, although the person remembered cleaning that sprayer when we watched it on the video cameras in review, cause we, we. First of all, the, the batch got to test it. We, we test every batch. The results came in and we were shocked to see that. We knew we weren't using it on plants. We didn't know how it got there. And so we reported it right away and it took us a little while to go back and watch the videos of how that was done. And at the end of it, I said, oh, now let's watch the sprayer getting cleaned. And we realized the sprayer sat there overnight and the next day it was picked up. And we use those sprayers to clean down tables between batches when there's no plants in there again, but it's just a sanitization step. And that pesticide was still in there and a little bit of it was in the air. The labs told us that it was actually, if this had been on food, it would have not only been okay for human consumption, it would have been okay for organic use because it was such a low level that there's some allowances for like spray between fields or something. So it was, it was a very teeny amount, but because it's not allowed in the medical and they were unsure, and we were. We admitted to them, we didn't know how it got there at first. Took us a while to figure it out. And so, you know, we should have decommissioned that sprayer. We shouldn't have used it in the first place. We had a professional environmental cleanup service come in and we tracked where we had used that sprayer, cleaned all those rooms. They swabbed them. We had to find a special lab in California that could test down to, I think it was like five parts per billion, teeny, teeny amounts basically for testing the insides of food processing equipment if pesticide had gotten in there. And, uh, so after they cleaned everything, there was no traces of it. We not only swabbed all the rooms that we cleaned, we swabbed all the other areas in the dispensaries, in the vault, processing areas, all of our processing equipment. There was no traces of it anywhere. They later came in and, uh, we sampled, uh, a huge number of lots of batches. Like you might have one batch that's in five different containers. We would take some sample from each of those containers, blend them together, sample that, and then we went through dozens of lots. All of that was cleaned.
Did it take before you found it? That's what I was wondering.
Well, you know, because you only test it at the end of the growth period.
And that's when?
So.
Six months or?
It takes, it takes about two months, about eight weeks for the plants to flower. So the time we used that sprayer and by the time, it was, it was probably a little bit longer than that cause you have to go through a dry cycle and then submit it for testing. So it was about three months before we recognized that there, there was an issue.
Yeah, right.
But we test every batch every single time. We never packaged anything. We, you know, as soon as, as soon as it's set for testing, it goes to a special shelf. It's both in that seed to sale tracking software in, in the designated area and physically in a designated area. So there's never a mix-up of, of, uh, starting to package something before it's approved. So we don't approve it until we get the testing results back. We test for many other things as well.
So you only get tested when it's two months? After two months, the plant is grown, then you get a test?
Well, the product isn't made yet. It's, it's in, it's in that last stages, those last final few days that the product is actually being produced by the plant.
So how often do you get the testing done?
We test every batch. So every week.
How often like?
Well, every week they're coming in.
Every week? That's, that's what I was wondering how long it took. Because I noticed some communities have had their own border health do some testing. And I was wondering, since the state is always telling us they're short of people, I'm wondering how long it took for them to catch this.
Well, they, they didn't catch it. We caught it.
We, we told them that we did something wrong.
I, I just wanted to accent that. You guys brought it to their attention. You noticed it and you, you know.
We could have totally swept this thing underneath the water if we wanted to.
Very professional, very responsible.
It's the regulations and, and, I know, we wanna follow the regulations.
Again, this is a new industry.
This is definitely.
Make sure.
Yeah, we don't wanna mess up.
The other question, oh, go ahead.
I would like to invite you again.
Yeah.
To come visit us.
Last time.
Because you, you, you have so many questions that are, that will be solved by a one hour tour. And if you want the fifteen minute tour, I'll give it. If you want the hour tour, you'll give it.
Hey.
So please take us up on this.
I, I.
It's all of you.
The other concern I have with the recreational is that, um, you're gonna get a different clientele, I'm thinking. You're not getting people that are sick or caretakers. You're getting people that are, want recreation. Let's put it that way. Um, so you, you might have a different clientele. So I'm wondering, what's it gonna be like out in the parking lot, you know? Uh, how are you gonna avoid any nuisances? What are you planning on doing out there?
Okay. How many liquor stores you have in town? Two?
Three.
Three, three liquor stores.
Yeah.
This is gonna be a recreational choice that somebody makes.
Right.
The same way somebody makes a recreational choice to go to a liquor store. We've, we're, we're far done with who's going to the liquor store or not. We're, we're, we're okay with whoever goes there.
Right.
We don't ask them. Fair question, but you're asking me to tell you that there are bad people that are gonna show up.
No, I'm not. I'm not. I'm just saying that there might be wrongers that's out there.
There is.
You're kind of out in the sticks, let's say, from, from the police station.
We have cameras all over the place. We monitor what goes on out there and there's still not gonna be any use. We, we, we will continue to not allow use in the parking lot. And, you know, if people are loitering and hanging out, we're gonna send our security folks out there to talk to them.
Yeah, and you're right close to the highway. So, uh, who knows, you know? It's so new to us, as you are new, that, that's what I was thinking about.
I'm glad the police though have had a chance to look at it and cogitate over it and I haven't heard any concerns from the police.
I've, 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 I have a wish that, um, me and my partner joke about this all the time. If you know Century Bank on Mystic Ave in Medford.
Excuse me?
Century Bank on Mystic Ave in Medford, they have two Middlesex Sheriff cars parked in the same spot for the last three years. So I would like to get an old Georgetown cop car parked in my parking lot and it will deter. So we're thinking about buying Georgetown a new, and getting us the old one.
All right.
So we're very involved in that because it's my name.
Sure.
It's my reputation that if there is an incident, the first person they're gonna come talk to is us.
Well, that's how I feel if you're awarded this, is that it's the board's responsibility to get this all covered. And then the ball is in your court. So it reflects on us, you know, so I feel the same way. So that's why we gotta work together to get this the way it should be.
Yeah.
So let's finish. I just had one, one quick.
Well, she's, let, let her, let her.
I think I'm okay.
You all set?
Yeah, I'll probably come back with another question.
Just a quick reference and I remember the last time we were here, it was, what was it, two years ago? You guys were around two years, right? And, um, I remember the, um, uh, the planning board from the adjacent town was here and they had great concerns about the, uh, the water and we had put, uh, we had that seven bay there. We had put a.
Rain garden.
Rain garden and stuff in our, uh, decision for testing, um, annual testing. That, that wasn't included, I guess, the, the results from the testing wasn't included in some of the stuff. If you could just send that, that would be really good. Naturally, that's gonna continue. It's one of the, one of the draft conditions to continue that process.
Sure.
And, uh, especially we're gonna have a, maybe like an influx of additional people probably. And, um, well, people come in, they need to use your bathroom. That's the idea, make sure the septic system doesn't contaminate.
Sure, sure.
So that's it. That was where I was and thank you, Patrick Tilly or wherever.
No, I'm fine. Go ahead.
Okay, um. So the ASBILT, um, using that as the submission, um, doesn't necessarily address or make clear what has changed from what was the approved plan versus what is actually built there today?
Mm-hmm.
Perhaps nothing has changed. But I can't tell from this plan, cause it's an ASBILT and the way it's done. The way it's done is it looks like just a, it looks like a proposed plan. There's no what was proposed versus what it was actually built clarification to this. I can't tell. Do you know if anything with regards to the site has not been built according to the plans that were approved or was modified from the plans?
For my, for my recollection, the exterior footprint of the building has never changed.
Correct, yep.
The facade, the, the loading docks and, and the way the building looks have changed.
Yep.
But we have not added any square footage to the building anywhere.
And as far as the, help remind me, because I honestly am drawing a blank, the, the parking lot, what you did to the existing parking lot was simply a redo of what was there in place or was there additions to it?
So, so the decision was that we had to add parking spots.
That's okay, right?
So in the north side of the, of the print, we added thirteen parking spots and then a little to the right, we added four more parking spots. And underneath on the south, we added parking spots. That portion was not redone. It was just sealed. The front portion was ripped up and re-coated with half inch or inch, whatever that was. And then the, the parking spots were painted.
And I, I remember that. So the only thing that, the only thing that we have as a board to hang our hat on is, is, is what's in writing, what's in plan, what's on paper and.
We could get you a copy of what was approved and an ASBILT.
What I would ask so that the board doesn't have to do that work, could, could, could you have the engineer verify that what was the plan that was proposed?
And approved.
And approved, that what is being shown as an ASBILT is the same.
Very reasonable question.
And if not, point out what has changed.
What the difference is, yeah.
Okay.
Like find, uh, find the seven different spots.
So that was, that was one, uh, basic question. I, I think, uh, it would be helpful to add some notes to this drawing which are simply addressing some of the items that, they're not changes to the building, but again, it's the only record of what's transpiring that you talked about, um, you know, how you're separating the retail from medical. You know, if that's not in the application somewhere, just a note on the drawing. You know, interior will be separated by a rope. It's something that just documents it. You talk about some signs, I think signage that's taken place.
Interior.
Yeah, so it's, so, so just in note form.
Yep.
Identify what will change inside, as silly as that sounds, then that, then that, that would be covered. When you talk to, I guess you'd be working with Peter Ogrin. When you talk with him, would you ask him to clarify it's, um, the very last note? And it says, ASBILT information depicted on this plan is the result of visual inspection by Haze Engineering. The word visual just caught my attention and that's not the same as an instrument.
No, we've never had a gun out there.
So, eh, this plan that comes back, that's, is gonna tell the board that what was approved has actually been built and nothing has changed, we're gonna want his, someone taking, you know,
So, so can I?
Responsibility for that.
Can I use the, uh, plan or the, the measurements, what do, what do you call when, when they come out for the measurements? What do you call this? Survey. That was done at the, when we bought the building? Or you want a new survey done?
No, the way, the way, the way, the way and, the way probably in this case, cause everybody I think understands the building has not changed and the dimensions are the same. The way they would do it is they would just verify, looking at the building, that it's the same building and then visually, visually, they would verify, which I think is what he's done. He would verify that this, these have been built roughly here this way. And if anything appeared in question, that's when the instruments would come out. Cause in the end, it's going to be whoever stamps this ASBILT and puts these notes on it, it's gonna be the hat, it's gonna be hanging the hat on them.
Mm-hmm.
So they would be using the instrument at their discretion.
Yep.
For getting survey information if they feel it's necessary.
Okay.
They don't feel it's necessary and they're comfortable saying this is, that's great too.
Mr. Shannon?
Yeah.
Just jump in. If, if, if we are making modifications to that plan, would, would it be unreasonable to ask that? On the old plan, it's, it's specifically said that the certain section was not being used and now it sounds like you are using it partially or gently. Maybe that should be specified that this portion, whatever portion it was that you said weren't, wasn't being used, is now being used. Just because it's a transit, I mean, this is site plan.
I, I, I think, well, I think, I think, I think too that, I think this is being used and nothing in excess of this will take place.
Great.
Do you see?
Just to say that there's a difference. In other words, the old one said this is not being used and now it is.
Right, and you could limit for these purposes, it's used, but I'm wondering, um, do you have a general sense without, without getting into your interior business model? Do you have any sense as to when that, when you might wanna start using that space?
Hopefully within the year, we'll have an application to you folks for that question.
So, so it might be good to structure this one to tee that up without going there to.
It sounds like, yeah, I mean, I, I, I'd roll that right into this if I were you. So you don't have to come back. Site plan, a site plan, a site plan.
The thing is, they, they might have.
Change five hundred square feet of your interior and you're here again.
Decisions. Decisions that you may, might not wanna do that yet, but tee it up, you know. We really, we wanna cooperate with you.
For sure.
I understand.
So just, just a little clarification, like, like, um, how would we delineate that on the drawing? This like area for?
I think what Harry's saying is put, put a whole new application in.
No.
No, no, no. I, I, I took.
Probably amend it.
What I, what I took, what I took, Harry, to me, correct, correct me if I'm wrong. I interpreted it to mean that when this plan comes back with these additional notes, there could simply be the same kind of note that would have, you know, note five. And it'll talk about this is now being used in here and those are the only uses that are being used in there. And it's just about recording it.
Okay.
And making sure that nothing else is going on.
There, there was a little blurb inside that section representative of that area that said not to be used for future, potential future use. So I don't remember exactly what.
Yeah, I, I remember that.
Change that to now being used or to be.
So it's just, it's just a note.
Something to that effect.
It's just a note.
And certainly, when the time comes to turn that into gross base or manufacturing, you, you'll probably wanna come back.
Yeah, no, I thought, I thought I heard that.
You'd have to tear up and go to the road there, right?
No, no.
Okay.
And, and that's, that's the, that's the spirit in which I'm trying to do these notes to also.
Yeah, no, I, I, I get the spirit here.
Um, our systems were, so, um, I, I, I'm almost, so there's a note in the rain garden that says pipe not connected to roof.
Correct.
Was that part of what was approved? Is that how that note read in the rain garden was not, does, is that the same note?
We did the whole construction.
Yeah.
And, um, we've, the question was, was there enough pitch from the downspout to get the water to the rain garden?
Yeah.
If there wasn't enough pitch, we would tie it into the roof, into the pipe. But we feel there was plenty of pitch to get it out to the rain garden. And it, it was a genius idea and it's working great.
Okay, so that, that is a change from the plan that was.
That could be a change from the plan then.
So that would be a note. That would just be a note clarifying that.
Yep.
Cause I, when I read that, I couldn't understand what that was about.
Yep.
Just a conceptual question, there are gonna be more cars parking on site? And just verify for me, you don't have to do it now, but just verify that the additional parking requirements fall within. You guys can cover those.
Yep.
Cause clearly there's gonna be some more parking. So that, that would be another note that you would, you could add to the plan.
That's a tough one. I don't think we have that in our regs.
I don't recall how we did the parking for this. I don't remember.
We didn't specify how many parking spaces for.
Oh, we did come up with a, we did come up with a.
You guys came up with a number.
Number one thirteen, from what I remember.
And there was a.
And we're not using half of them.
Yeah, and so that, I mean, that kind of information, you know, you're not using half of them. I mean, the note would say, you know, the original calculation was based on whatever you based it on.
Yeah.
Cause we obviously accepted it. And the, this, this new use is.
The employees had to park in the back. Do you still do that?
We, we don't, but we certainly would if the front was filling up to the point where it was anywhere near needed. Right now, we have them sort of park away from the, the entranceway. So they fill up the, let's say the north side of that, top of the drawing, very better description. But there's still so much parking that it's not a problem.
And then, um, the last question, which I, I wanted to pick up on what Harry mentioned about testing. Are, are these systems? I'm thinking out loud right now.
Yep.
Nothing is changing on the site. Nothing is changing on the building. I guess, uh, it would be nice to see a note that says, you know, the current stormwater management system is functioning as designed and that that note would be on the drawing.
Okay.
Then we'd be, I think, covered for parking stormwater.
Annually tested for nitrogen, phosphorus, blah, 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 everything by, oh, whatever.
So remind me, please, of what we required in the testing.
What does it, what does it say?
Test annually for nitrogen, phosphorus and potassium, potassium to evaluate, yeah.
Okay.
For the nitrogen load.
But, but where? In which parts of the?
I think it's just the rain gardens and the stormwater management system.
In that area, right, I believe, where you are, right there, yeah. Because that was, that's what falls into.
This part here?
Yes, yeah, because that, that's where.
So.
Have you been testing all of them?
You probably haven't tested them.
I think I have to concur with you, Mr. Hoop. I, I was, I was reading through the special permit. I just made it a job for somebody to go through all our agreements and make a punch list of what we need to do when, because.
So it.
Well, we'll get, we'll get it tested before next.
Get tested before you do it.
Yes.
Okay.
That's probably all right because it was, it was originally submitted anyway, the results. So we'll know if there's a change in.
Okay, so that was it for me. Um, Harry, did you wanna move over to the, uh, site plan to the?
I have, I have a couple more.
Couple more, okay.
Yeah, I wrote down, like, uh, for instance, your hours, are they gonna be the same?
Right now, we're at eleven to seven, and I think the special permit was eight to eight.
Eight to eight.
Well, the, the special permit right now that we have, the medical is eight, I think it's eight, eight to eight. I would like to keep the same option as from eight to eight. Cause as a matter of fact, I was just at the plan and I went like, we should push our opening hours one hour further to eight o'clock at night.
And you mentioned that you wanted two lines, uh, so there would be no self-service displays.
No self-service.
No, 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 no. It's not a supermarket.
No delivery. No delivery.
The state does allow delivery. We're not doing it quite yet, but it does allow for delivery.
I thought they didn't have the regs yet for it. They weren't gonna deal with it until.
Next year, yeah.
Well, okay, under medical, they're allowing.
Medical, medical delivery, yes.
Medical is fine, but this is rec.
Correct.
So, and mail, you're not gonna mail anything out?
No.
You don't mail.
Customers.
A federal violation.
And obviously, no onsite consumption.
No onsite consumption.
Just like alcohol.
Okay. Um, now I have a note, and I don't know whether you have it, video recording system? You have that, don't you? Yeah.
Hundred and thirty-nine cameras.
Thirty-nine?
Hundred and thirty-nine.
Hundred and thirty-nine cameras.
I hope you're gonna.
No more than one sign.
We're not changing signage?
You're not gonna change the sign. All right. No images or paraphernalia displayed.
Okay, be a little more specific with that question, please.
Not exterior.
Not exterior. What do you, what are you planning on for?
There is no window displays, if that's what you are looking to be answered, no.
Okay, um, how about LED signs? No bright signs?
Oh, and you can put all these things right into the decision.
This is my list. Uh, how are you going to dispose of the waste in the seeds? How have you been doing that now?
So the state requires us to have a special area that we, is lockable. We have a big, what we call the waste cage.
Lockable, did you say?
Lockable, yeah. It's basically, they wanted a room. We have a cage, uh, that's got a lock on it. It's got cameras on it. And you need two registered agents who fill out a log when they're destroying this material. Under camera, they ship, that we, it's basically like a wood chipper. These stalks are very hardy and you grind it up and then you have to mix it with soil until it's called irrecoverable. And then it gets shipped to a, uh, certified incinerator, composter or landfill.
So they don't, they don't consider that hazardous waste?
No, it's, it's, it's plant-based.
It's a plant.
Okay, all right. I'm not sure, you know what I missed in their decision before was that, it's, your permit, it will not be reassigned or transferred. Do you recall that?
I think it's in there.
Yeah.
I didn't see that, so I thought that would be something.
It's in the, in the draft. It may be in the old one. I think there was a concern about it because you were a nonprofit at that point, right?
You were.
I don't think there was a concern about it.
And, and I could tell you, I, I, gentlemen, were gracious enough to give me a walkthrough. And it really is pretty impressive.
I was with you.
Yeah.
Or did you go another time?
No, I went another time. I went all inside and they were, uh, it's really, it's like Epcot Center inside there. It's, uh, it's very impressive.
The epic center, yeah?
No, no, it's very impressive. It's, uh, technical, it's scientific, it's, it's a laboratory.
I, I, I would reiterate that I think you might find a lot, some peace of mind if you went there.
Totally, absolutely.
I, I, I'm going to turn.
Can I just say, the decision does state in condition fourteen, the special permit shall be limited to the current permit holder, Healthy Farms Inc., and shall lapse if the permit holder ceases operating.
Okay, all right, so, so you, Healthy Farms is the only one that owns the business?
Yep.
All right, uh, how about, uh, back to your inspections now? What about, um, uh, random inspections by the, by the local boards?
Well, the state does them. As far as the, the local boards, we haven't had any, but there's something preventing that from happening.
Like the Board of Health, you know, comes for an annual inspection for the kitchen.
Oh, they do?
And the Fire Department comes for annual inspection for the fire system and.
I was wondering if the Board of Health was involved.
Yeah.
They are?
Yep.
Okay.
They went through the kitchen areas and.
Check that. They gave us our food license, so.
Do we pay, pay you back on that question? Do we have memos for the record from fire, from police, from Board of Health that your last visit, everything's fine?
I don't remember Board of Health. I do remember.
No, we have police. Yeah, we have police, no comment. Fire Department commented, um, exemplary business, no problems. And, um, we got from Light Department, they have no comment.
Okay.
We don't remember Board of Health.
No, they didn't submit anything. You can ask, you can't cause them to drink.
Have we, can, 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 have we asked and they haven't?
Right, I sent out fifteen department notices and deadlines and everything else. And, you know, as the phrase goes, if they, you know, if they don't have a problem.
Yeah, no, no, no.
Well, interestingly enough, I would think that, oh, once this all occurs, now you're going to be, you're making, you're making cookies. You're, you're a, what's the, what's the term, a manufacturer? I think that's what they're. So, I mean, you probably be ramping that up a little bit too, I would think, and need more product. I would think that the Board of Health will be doing inspections the same way that they'd be doing inspections for.
Uh, in, in Cambridge, the Board of Health is in my restaurants every, at least every six months.
Right, that's what I mean, you know? So I'm wondering.
To, 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 just to, to, to hit the nail on the head, um, would, would the board be comfortable with, with John just sending a memo specifically to the Board of Health?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
I, I.
Just saying, you know, we, we're, we're, we're looking to you for, um.
Random inspections.
For your.
Is what I'm looking for.
Your sign off or your acceptance of the current conditions for.
And that would be, once again, part of my certificate of occupancy is one of the signatures.
Most likely, most likely.
Well, I see, you know, um.
Absolutely.
Um, we're gonna just take a two-minute break, okay? One quick two-minute break.
Two-minute break.
Okay, folks, we are back on. Thank you. Um, where were we?
Did, did we want to just run through this, make a first quick pass or any potentials or-
Well, we do, but someone was talking, asking questions. I think, was it you, Tilly?
Probably, probably. I was wondering if Raleigh-
It's all gonna come back to us again in that regard.
The, the green card, did the, did the Water Department, the Raleigh Water Department answer? Your green card there?
There's three, there's three, there's three Abutus. And the state did not give me the green card back, but the other two Abutus did.
State didn't give it to you?
No, I haven't seen it yet.
Lovely.
But I, I also gave John the receipts of the certified mail to all three of them.
But you got Raleigh's back?
Well, Raleigh's Water Department is not part of the Abutus list.
Raleigh, they, yeah?
Well, it's an amendment on state-
Within three hundred feet?
Special permits, you, you have to, it's, it's Abutus within three hundred feet, but you also have to notify all communities that border Georgetown.
Even if they're not, yeah?
Okay, that was not in the regulations, or that was not required of me. Let me put it that way.
A special permit is required, and that's what we're doing.
John, you wanna?
So you got time to do that.
Yeah.
So it's notify all towns that border Georgetown?
No, Raleigh, Raleigh is within thirty, three hundred feet from your property.
So it's just notified a town?
I was referring to the Mass General Law, not our bylaw.
I was requested by the planner to get a certified Abutus list.
Absolutely.
That's from our town, but you need one from their town.
Well, I was not told to do that.
Okay. Well, you got time to do that. They were at the last meeting.
You let me know what you'd like to see?
Yeah.
Basically, it's just Raleigh.
Right. All we're doing is making sure they're notified and public hearing will be continued till speculated.
It's basically what we have in the-
We, we, I don't know if you guys remember, but we went through exactly the same thing the last time, where we actually pulled the application because the notification was not done right. And this is the first public hearing.
Yeah, it's, it's important technicality.
And we decided to pull-
Start it over.
Pull the application. We've done all our homework today, so in a month from now, we should be able to redo a new application with the right Abutus list.
Well, actually, I have a question about that. Harry, are you referring to these kinds of notifications?
Exactly. That's why we, that's why we hear about something in Newbury that's a, an, an attached garage.
Does the applicant send us that information or just the town?
It's whoever is doing the, the Abutter and-
Well, I'm not, I'm not really sure about that.
Different communities do it different ways.
I don't know who wanted to do it.
Different communities do do it differently.
Okay.
For Georgetown, the applicant.
Cool.
So, Harry, for, for, for my own education, Mass General Law requires it?
Special permits, yeah.
Yeah.
Should be chapter forty.
Okay, so, fair enough.
Oh, I'm cool with it.
Yeah, yeah.
But now, how about the process?
Him.
I don't think the process is tainted. I don't see it as tainted.
We don't have to restart?
No, no.
With the process, if you find out the process-
Well, no, no, I understand the process of, of sending certified mail. We've started a public, we've started a public hearing on this particular thing tonight, and Raleigh was not notified, is what the issue is.
Oh, I see.
And we're not closing anything here. We're, I mean, I, I have every intention of continuing this.
Yes, I will be, but it's-
No, I under, I hear what you're saying.
And that's why the last time, we decided to pull the application.
And I think part of, I think a big part of what went into that was that it was, it was the first time.
I understand.
And it was, everybody was, whoa, um, this being what it is, um-
It's, it's your pleasure.
Well, I, I, I appreciate that, but I, and I'm not trying to throw it back at you, but I'm, I'm gonna, in, in that, I'm okay, I think the Board is okay with proceeding this way. I honestly don't know what would happen if someone from Raleigh showed up and said, hey, you guys did not notify us per, I don't know what would happen. I, I don't know-
We'd have to start all over again, from legal ad to whole-
I have a, I have a, I have a superior state case against me, and the main argument for the plaintiff is that we did not properly notify.
Yeah.
I'm willing to get the thirteenth lawyer on board, but, you know, you guys are gonna get into the lawsuit also if-
Well, that's your option, if you want to discuss it with your lawyer.
I, I think that at this particular time, especially if we're a month away and we have enough time, it's my preference to do it right.
I, I, I would agree. I would agree.
Yeah.
And it, there is, there is no extra expense then to close this application officially.
Resubmit.
And resubmit.
With some fixes.
With the fixes that we already have.
Those fixes.
We've done a lot of discussion.
Just make sure there's no other fixes.
Do you have to, do you have, you have to redo those, other, the notifications you already have?
Yeah, it's not like three hundred of them, it's four.
I understand, I understand.
But there would be a legal ad expense.
I, I don't think it's gonna, I don't think it's gonna slow you down, and I, and I, I think it is, is the safe way to do it, because you're right, someone, the, the last thing you want with this stuff is for that to pop up and throw you back.
And it's very easily done.
So, I, I, so-
Are, are you asking for us to withdraw right now?
I think we would-
At the, at the end of the discussion, yes.
I'd rather we try to get all the other potential issues on the table first, just so we can get it the next version.
Make that request, right?
I think you got it already.
Use the paper, you know, and then, yeah, then the process, right?
Yeah.
Okay. It's a great question.
Withdraw what I've read.
That is all, that is all in this, isn't it?
You just gotta get the right dates from John.
Plus, you may, may want to entertain what was discussed, and, you know, you're planning on expanding in the not-too-distant future. I don't know if you wanna get into an amended site plan.
Yeah, but that's, that's gonna require a couple hearings, and I don't know if we wanna get into that.
I don't, I don't know where to go already.
I, I, I just finished thinking about it.
Yeah.
If we haven't become best friends by now, then we've got plenty of time later.
Okay, so with that-
You said January, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, if you wanna just run through this, I just made a couple of quick notes, and really not that many of them. Um, I'm on page four of the, the draft, draft decision.
Okay, so, I apologize, but I cannot find my draft decision.
It looks like this.
Yeah, it has a red stamp on it.
Request, I know, I know you sent it, and I know I've got it, but I-
In that packet, it's probably like right in the package.
Yeah, it was the last.
In that packet.
It was the last item in the packet.
Oh, yeah, right.
There it is.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
John, what was the date the application was submitted?
August second. Okay.
And, again, just quick, quick hits.
Yeah, August second.
Date is August second, two thousand eighteen.
I'm just at, uh, I'm, I'm on page four of the eight, eight, page of the decision, number seven. Excuse me. It seems to have a, um, paragraph there about the, and again, this is a, this is a copy and paste from the original decision where you had a lot of broken up pavement, and we, we wanted to sort of leave it off to Larry Graham to look at it and say, hey, can you fix it up? It sounds to me like you tore a bunch of it up, and you fixed it, and doesn't even really seem like that is necessary anymore. Number seven, in my opinion, could just go away.
I would delete it.
Just go away, right, there you go. Again, these are just suggestions for, I'm, I'm sure we're gonna get another draft. Number nine, I, I think that is supposed to be not zoning board of appeals, but I believe that should be the planning board, right?
Could we go back to seven?
Sure.
I would suggest we retain the second sentence there.
It shall be repaired to the satisfactorily required.
Satisfied, you're in.
I, I'm, again, I, I don't know that it needs any repair at this point.
But that's exactly it.
Or something to the effect that maybe it should be, shall be maintained.
If the technical review agent says it's fine, then it's fine.
Yeah, that, number nine would be deleted too, because with a-
We're, right, so that's kill two, right? Or if, if, like Rob is saying here, maybe number seven should be just reworded a little bit to, to reference that it should always maintain-
Maintain.
Good, um, good condition or something. Yeah, sorry.
No problem.
Cool.
Good.
Number nine, I don't understand where the zoning board is involved.
That's why it's getting deleted.
Yeah, we're gonna delete nine, right? We good with that?
Yep.
Eleven hours of operation. Since we're talking about retail sales here, I, I don't, I don't feel comfortable with dispatch of home deliveries. I'm good with it saying in the old one, and I'm, I'm still not a hundred percent. I, I still maintain you have that old one. You have that old one, you have all the conditions of the old one, and this is an adjunct to it, so I don't wanna see disparities, but I also don't wanna talk about home deliveries right now for retail, because to my knowledge, there are no regs covering them, right?
So you're-
Right, they're not, they're not, they're not approving licenses for that at this time.
Yeah, they're not even gonna give you that, so perhaps this isn't the appropriate place to address that.
So you're, you're just gonna remove it, the whole level?
Just remove the including dispatch of deliveries?
What number is that, if you-
Eleven, number eleven.
Page four.
Number eleven. Sorry, I don't have another copy for you.
It's all up here.
You're good.
I sent you guys this one.
Even, even I can't do that. It's crayon type, it's a different color, weird. Um, and the only other thing was, um, well seventeen, the reiteration of seventeen, just to follow that up. Uh, seventeen being the one about the testing, the annuality of the, um, maybe we can, maybe we could specify that a little bit more, give it a little more clarity for you.
Yep.
So you, you know, where we're looking and stuff like that. Eight, number eighteen, I, I think we, we had some suggestions and recommendations from the Fire Chief back in twenty sixteen. I, I don't think we, I think we can effectively eliminate that.
Yeah, that sounds good.
I'm good with that, number eighteen there.
Mm-hmm.
Talking about a, a letter that's now two years defunct.
Yeah.
And everything that was done, that was recommended, to my knowledge, was done.
That should be repeated instead of, I always, you know, I, I didn't like that. Letters get lost, and I think the summary should be in there, you know, state what the Fire Chief wanted, rather than there's a letter.
I, I, if I recall, it, it had to do with, um, uh, testing of the sprinklers.
Yeah.
And they wanted a fire box, but we did all that stuff.
Yeah, and that's all, that's all done, we wouldn't be at this stage right now where you're open and running if I were not there.
I was already responded with their memo.
Yeah, so I, I think it's kinda redundant to have that in there. Um, just, just on the formatting, John, where the bold face prior to sign off of the building permit, do they need a building permit?
There will be some interior fit-up work.
There will be? I thought there wouldn't be.
Do any electrical, no additional plumbing?
I think so.
Nothing. So you're not gonna need a building permit for anything?
Literally a stand.
Not at this particular stage of the project.
Unless the Board agrees that it should be a wall there separating. Unless that happens, you're gonna need a permit.
So, I think the whole section goes along. Is that right, John?
Final site plan, um, issued by my Lars?
Sign off number one.
Endorsement of the project, which we have to do, decision of the town clerk, appeal, that has to stay. I, I, I would just, I would just, perhaps we just get rid of that, the, the bold face there, where it says prior to sign off of the planning, prior to building permit?
Well, there's a problem though, Harry. Um, if you're going, 'cause this is a modification.
Mm-hmm.
So what you're, what you're journeying down the path of a whole different special permit for Rick.
Right.
So this is still in existence for medical, is what I'm saying. This is what we approved at, for the medical permit. If you, what you're doing is eliminating some of the things for medical, and I don't think-
No, this is, this is a, a new decision for a modification of a special permit.
But it doesn't look like it.
It doesn't look like it, 'cause it's-
We should delineate only those things that change the original special permit.
Right.
Rather than reiterating them.
That's what I'm-
Don't you think?
Typically, typically, what it, the way it's written is, um, just that, it's, you know, amendment to it. It's, it does, it doesn't destroy anything about what's been approved, it's just adding to, and you just put in this one, what's being added to the original one.
And, and I think that wording is in here.
All conditions of approval from the previous approval shall remain in effect.
This decision does not invalidate any previous conditions required by-
That, that covers that.
Yeah, and that's, that's on, that's on page seven.
And that might simplify this document, to a large extent, in terms of ma, making it and for us to evaluate it. Because then we don't have to go back and say, well, is this the same wording as was on the old special?
Well, I don't think we have to do that. I, I think we have to look at it as though this is a, a new permit, essentially, for a new use, set of uses, and I, I'm-
And what I get from the bylaw, from the zoning, is there is gonna be a new use that covers both.
Ah, really?
It's gonna be called retail marijuana business. That's the use zone, and if you choose to sell medical, that's up to you. If you choose to sell recreational, that's up to you.
The problem being that we have yet to get to that phase. What we did was we-
We approved the zone at town.
We approved the zoning, but it still deals this way. That's, that's the problem.
Once again, the correct way to do it is to issue a new special permit for Healthy Farms as a retail marijuana company.
Yeah.
Just, just to be the same as in the zoning, just to be consistent in the zoning, because there is not gonna be a medical marijuana license anymore on the state level.
Really?
There is not gonna be a medical marijuana business in Georgetown, because they're all gonna be called marijuana businesses, retail marijuana business. Everything, everything-
I think that eventually that's true, but for a while, we still have the DPH, you have them in parallel until-
But everything in the zoning decision was, everything that was an RMD was strucken out and was replaced with, I forget the exact words, but marijuana business, something.
We have copies of that, too.
In order to be, to be consistent, the special permit should be issued for a marijuana business. What, what we do inside is different. We sell non-taxed, high-dose marijuana to people who have a medical card. We sell regulatory marijuana to people who don't have a card, and that gets taxed twenty percent.
Again, we, we-
I know, it's a brand-new field.
Yeah, yeah, and we still-
But that's the way I, that's the way I interpreted it, and that's the way, it will be a clean fix.
Yeah.
To take all the conditions that were in the old, in the old special permit, apply them in a new special permit, plus whatever else needs to be added, and now we have a brand-new special permit that fits the zoning.
Yeah.
And it's the original as amended?
Original as amended, but issued as a new one.
And that's essentially where we're almost getting there.
So everything that relates to medical, we could just-
But it's still the old special permit for the medical marijuana business. And we're looking for a new special permit. You folks are gonna be issuing special permits for people that are gonna come to town new. So it's very simple. The whole question we had is, is it just a modification or is it a new permit? If you ask me, while we're sitting here, let's do it right, and let's do a new permit.
When I started the meeting, that's what our attorney said, this is a new permit, and so that's why I brought it up. It, you can't-
So John might wanna do a little bit of homework on that.
According to what we're doing, or what we thought we were doing here, we are, we are approving an application for a special permit for a proposed marijuana business.
Right.
Modification to the existing special permit to allow for retail sale of marijuana from a previously approved, and that should be to additionally allow the retail sale of marijuana from previously-
Perhaps John can straighten that out before our next meeting.
Because actually, that does get into the meeting notice, because the meeting notice was amended.
Came from this, yeah. Interesting, interesting. Yep, well-
Now, I, I don't have a preference. Did, I, I, my preference is to expedite this and, and to keep it simple.
Right, but because we're gonna go do a brand-new application, we might as well go from ninety-five percent to ninety-nine percent.
Yeah, I think you're right.
That would be good.
And, and so just, it's consistent with everything else that you guys are gonna be doing in the future?
Mm-hmm.
While then, just having this lame, you know, this one odd doc out there with like-
Right, right.
-special permit, plus an amendment, plus this, plus this.
Yeah.
Well, there are no other special permits, so.
Well, you'll get other-
Not yet.
Yeah, they- You'll get other applicants.
We, we most likely will, but there'll be special permits, clean and simple.
That's what, that's the point.
And that's what I'm saying, let's just make this one clean and simple while we have to change.
The template, right?
Yes.
I understand.
Our ordinance was changed, and the language was all changed, it's all packaged into one, and it's a marijuana business.
Right. And that's what, that's what this is saying.
That's what we're doing, a new special permit for a marijuana business, and that's all encumbering. Marijuana business is actually defined within the state statute, and it could be eight different types of businesses.
Right.
Craft, a micro.
Mm-hmm.
Commune.
But he, he's explicitly doing three things now.
We're doing tier four, grow, we're doing manufacturing, and we're doing, what's the other?
Retail. So three things is going to take place in that roof, under that roof.
So we will, so this will, this will get, the redrafting, this will, it'll get retitled to marijuana business.
Does that make sense, John?
I mean, do you have your own council?
Thirteen of them, which one you want?
Okay, because I did forward this.
Yeah, and they had no comments.
Last week, I had no response back.
No, I, I, we, we talked about it, and he had somebody look at it. But let's, let's see if we can get that out a little.
I mean, your guys are probably more experienced in drafting this stuff in accordance with our state law than our own council, as a possibility.
It's a brand-new ballgame. I mean, really, it's.
As I recall, as one company can only have three different types of business under marijuana.
It's not, it's, it's three, so one license allows us to have three retail, up to three retails, and two cultivation sites, but they're talking about different sites in that case. So this would count as one site with a cultivation and one retail in it, and we also have also a retail in Cambridge, obviously.
Mm-hmm.
So that.
And there's a manufacturing component as well.
Yeah, and that's under the DPH regulations, under the Cannabis Control Commission's, again, it's, it's up to three businesses.
Three-pointed sales businesses.
But they're all healthy farm.
Yeah.
They're not this, this three brothers.
No, three brothers is the real estate owner.
That's it.
That's it.
Okay, so they're not.
I'm one of the three brothers, just to confuse you a little.
Where's the third guy?
So let's, let's.
I'm a fly.
He's my cousin.
So we've been on, so we've been on this for, we're close to two hours, so I'd like to wrap this up now.
As, as far as I'm concerned, Mr. Chairman, if, if the applicant is of the mind to ask for withdrawal without prejudice at this time, I would make the motion to allow such.
So.
I'll second it.
You'll scribble something down? Would you already do that? Motion has been made, and it's been seconded to accept the applicant's motion to withdraw without prejudice.
Without prejudice.
For Healthy Farms, Inc. Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four yes, one absent. Okay, thanks a lot.
Thank you.
I think we made a lot of progress, actually.
Yeah, no, I mean, and I think it's important that we just are going to try to do this as clean as possible, and if we have the time anyway, which we do, because it's going to be a month away, let's do it right.
And, you know, the, the fact is, the state is slow on this, so.
We don't want to make it any slower, that's all.
Exactly.
But we also, we also want to, you know, be ready to hit the ground running when, when it does happen.
You are the second one to open.
I'd be happy.
All right, so.
Have a good night. Thank you.
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion has been made, and it's been seconded to.
If not tomorrow, after Labor Day.
To close, close the public hearing for Healthy Farms. Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four yes, one absent. Public hearing is closed.
Right.
Hearing closed.
Public, is, hearing has been closed. Okay, so, it's that.
Back to correspondence?
Yeah, back to correspondence. National Ave, Market Analysis, and Department of EPA lettered with issuance of waterway license for 13 Lakewood Drive. Does anybody have anything they wanted to talk about on that?
I thought that this site readiness for National Way was actually very interesting in the context of what these guys are talking about. There are two, two parcels in there.
Yeah.
One is more, the northern one is, is more amenable to things like, because it's right in the, in the overlay.
Two parcels.
There's a north and a south.
Oh, it's one, it's one parcel, but it's separated by a lot of them. It should be two parcels, they should, the town should.
There was no surprise there when I was on the Economic Development Committee, that's what we made the consensus, that the concrete batch and plant was there, the area is wet, and the housing of the 40B, you know, each one has prevented any interest in the area, like, you know, the traffic and the concrete trucks going through, that kind of turns people away that would want to be developing it, and there was nothing new in there, and honestly, we knew it was wet.
Well, at this point, we still don't have.
That was, yeah, and that was done.
We have frontage.
That was done, the, the court case wasn't done, finished there, right?
Right, right.
Now it is.
Yeah.
And we still don't have.
I just, yeah, I just wrote a memo to the Board of Selectment on this relative to what the Economic Development Committee's been dealing with, the property, and there's a whole bunch of possibilities that are being worked on, one being priority one, to subdivide the property into two parcels, south and north. And reason for that, you have a huge wetland that bisects the property. By subdividing into two, you could end up with, you know, the highest, best uses available for both sites, so, you know, it's a higher rate of return in that regard. But access is still the issue that has to be dealt with for both parcels. An A and R plan may be coming in before this board in the coming months regarding this, and, you know, there's effectively zero. There's some frontage on the southwest portion that borders National Ave, there's actual frontage there, there's no actual frontage on the north end of it, but, you know, it wouldn't be for building purposes, it would just be for recording purposes and future conveyance of unbuildable lots until such time as frontage is created.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, it's an easy way to deal with it.
Right, right.
Any other discussion for issuance of waterway license for 13 Lakewood Drive? I didn't, I didn't have any.
No, we've dealt with that a couple times.
Okay. So, that would take care of correspondence, there's also a town of Newbury in there, town of Boxford, and town of Boxford has two correspondence reminders.
Special permit.
Planning Board, all right. Planning Office, there are four items listed for discussion. It's already nine o'clock, so we have review status of stormwater and erosion control, review status of Attorney General's determination of OSRD, review proposal recreational marijuana rules and regs, and vote to establish escrow account for Parish Road OSRD.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we, that we establish an escrow account for Parish Road OSRD, technical review work in the amount of $3,000.
Four, please.
$4,000, excuse me.
It's already up to that amount.
Yeah.
Can imagine, yep.
What was that number, wasn't it?
A second.
That's actually what I would say.
Motion has been made, and it's been seconded to open an escrow account for Parish Road OSRD, technical review work in the amount of $4,000. Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Four yes, one absent. So, let's go to stormwater erosion control zoning bylaw. John or Harry, I don't know who wants to take the lead on it, it's up to you guys.
I just have a real quick question.
Mm-hmm.
At this point, we, we seem to have modified another town's regs, they, they look very promising, I'd be honest with you, I didn't get a chance to really look at them hard and fast. From what I saw, the only question I had in my mind was the table that's used in it, and whether or not the, the CV, the, the curve numbers on that are actually reflective of the Cornell numbers, but perhaps this is something that we, at this point, either want to start a little ad hoc committee for, or maybe we should just make public notice for a regulatory hearing and begin that process, and work all the details out through the, through the public hearing process.
Are you volunteering?
For either, yeah, absolutely, yeah, this, this, this needs to get done, this needs to get done.
I, I think, I think an ad hoc, John, what do you think? I think that's a great way of doing it.
Yeah, and, you know, Harry and I had a chance to talk before the meeting started about this, and I was under the impression that the, the previous special permit granting authority for all of this is still, but it's the Planning Board, and the zoning ordinance has been amended to that effect, so the Planning Board is the permit granting authority when it comes to stormwater and erosion control matters, and the ordinance is in place, now we need the regs, and the regs are long overdue of being completed. We've made a, a big step forward today. I asked Andrea if she could take the other community's regs, which those are great regs, very well thought out, detailed.
They're the best.
And to start fashioning them for our use, our town's use.
Yeah.
And, so that work is underway relative to an ad hoc committee, and I think that's the best way to go, because, you know, we will be busy at meetings, regular board meetings.
Could we, could we do this? Is, is the board comfortable with Harry and, and anybody else who wants to, to, you know, work with John directly on this, and quite frankly, I don't want to see emails or anything about it until it's ready to be presented.
And why don't we, why don't we do this? We could, yeah, we could do this email-wise.
See, when they're on the grill, not before.
Harry is excellent at this, as we know.
Yeah, he is good.
So, once this draft is done, and it is already done, I just have to check it tomorrow, and I'll send it off to you, and you can start working on it, and we can, back and forth, back and forth, we should have something for this Planning Board in not too long. I'd rather go about it that way than, you know, try to create the sausage in, in a public venue, which we're probably not going to have time.
I couldn't agree more, and it's, 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 it's just a much more effective, I think, efficient way to do these kinds of things, and I think the board has the personnel on top with it that's, you know, well-qualified to do it, so, okay.
And the goal will be that this board will eventually have, in quick order, this long elusive missing.
Absolutely, we have to hold a, we have to hold a regulatory hearing anyway, with the notice of the paper, blah, 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 and the whole thing, and at some point, we'll have them pretty much ready and ready for the public to.
So, as the chairman.
Do you give Andrea a deadline?
So that's.
Yeah, so the chairman and I, you know, in talking what we want to accomplish, and this is just a brief aside, I'm not going to get into anything, but we want to accomplish a certain set of goals, you know, missing links that should have been done in years past, and get everything tied up as much as we can, but also realizing that, you know, we can only accomplish so much every year, but.
You could also send it to me when she corrects it.
Good, good.
Yeah.
I think so. I think so. She just volunteered.
You just waited for me.
I think so, I did.
You were that glimmer.
Okay, so that takes care of the first item on the Planning Office, review of stormwater erosion control. Second one is review status of Attorney General's determination on the OSRD zoning amendment. John, you have anything you want to add about that?
I do. I do. This is more interesting than what I mentioned in my little comments report, and I had a chance to go over this in, in regard to, you know, Tilly's concerns with this, and, you know, if we have two minutes, I'll explain. There's a caveat in the Attorney General's okay of Article 26, and they did give the okay, that what we have in place, the OSRD, as it was amended, annual town meeting, is good. However, they did not have the actual language of the ordinance in front of them relative to comparing it with another community in Massachusetts of which they did find a problem. Now, if you look at the Attorney General's note, footnote 13, and how it makes reference to the other community in major residential development bylaw, that note 13 is saying that that particular community demanded of all applicants that they submit, they have to submit for a special permit, a, a major residential development.
And that's what hurts us.
No, 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 it does not.
No, it doesn't?
No. This is what I want to point out to the board, which I specifically referenced in here, okay? And this is the point that needs to be made. Okay, all right, it's Section 16548 of the newly approved OSRD amendment, and that's on the bottom of page one, and if the board would let me, I'll just read this real quick. Where it does provide for the exception in not requiring this application over that of an applicant's right to come in with a subdivision plan, any proposed development in the town of Georgetown which would create more than 10 lots or dwelling units, or is a parcel of 10 acres or more, shall be required to submit a special permit application to the Planning Board in accordance with the provisions of this bylaw. Now listen, now, now listen.
The next, the end of it?
Yeah, no, no, no. The applicant may also submit a conventional subdivision plan at the same time in accordance with the rules and regulations governing the subdivisions of land in the town of Georgetown. The Planning Board shall, in compliance with Mass. General Laws 48, Section 9, hold a public hearing on the proposed OSRD application and a concurrent public hearing on the proposed conventional subdivision, if applicable, if it's applicable, if they submit it, they can submit.
If they choose to.
Right. In the event, excuse me, in the event both an OSRD concept plan and a conventional subdivision plan are submitted prior to the close of the hearing, the Planning Board shall recommend, shall recommend, not insist, shall, which plan is considered, it considers most beneficial to the town, and the applicant shall also, prior to the close of the hearing, elect which plan he or she wishes to pursue, and shall inform the Planning Board of his or her choice in writing.
So, I don't see any difference, I'm sorry, you guys.
No, 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 you have to see the difference. The difference is.
I'm trying, I'm trying.
No, no, the difference is, okay, yeah, they shall submit an OSRD plan.
Shall as you must.
But they may also elect to submit a definitive subdivision plan. After the concurrent hearing, if, if they do submit a definitive subdivision plan, the Planning Board, in accordance with this language, has a concurrent public hearing on the definitive and the OSRD, and at the end of the concurrent hearing, the Planning Board can recommend to the applicant, recommend, not mandate, recommend to the applicant, which when they like, and the applicant still has a choice to go conventional or OSRD, and that's the absolute important exception of what we're talking about.
The crux of it.
Whereby the AG, if they got into this and had the language, they'd be able to realize that we're not excluding through our permitting process, we're not excluding Mass. General Law provisions allowing for people to subdivide their property in a conventional manner. So that's what the difference is. We, we.
Difference is that of the community, the ones that are.
Oh, you.
They didn't, the applicants, we thought them had no choice.
Right.
They said, you're going to do it this way, the Planning Board said, you will do it this way.
I still feel like town councils should look at it.
Here, it's completely the opposite.
Yeah, but town council did review this.
We said, please show us both, and we'd like to see you do this.
Yes, they did.
They make a recommendation, but you ultimately have the choice.
Yeah, that's how you're reading it.
We're not depriving them of their rights under subdivision.
I mean, town council reviewed all the language in here before it went to town.
They always do that, but this particular Attorney General letter, I think you ought to look at it.
Well, I'm just saying, we're probab, we probably, our language probably goes to the nth degree of allowance.
That's, that's.
Where it, it's not, it's not taking away someone's statutory, statutory right to submit a conventional subdivision in accordance with Mass. General Laws. We, we allow them, they may, if they want to.
Absolutely. Every right in the world to.
Now, the, 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 the problem, you don't have to really worry about, is. is that for anybody, an OSRD plan is so superior to a conventional, you'll never have, you'll never have another conventional.
I know, but why aren't they biting?
Their investors would never let them go with a definitive.
Right?
They'd toss them right out, but they'd get another design.
And everybody's, you know, it, it go, it's all environmentally sensitive, you're keeping more trees, you're keeping more wildlife intact. You're doing everything for the environment.
They have town council.
I don't know, there's hardly anybody left out there that wants to strip the land.
Because I think the Attorney General is, is correct, and I'm, I'm not an eye. And we did it from 2009, which I was hoping.
Same thing, same thing.
I was hoping they would get town council to review it, but there's two different towns there now listed where the issue has come up.
Because they didn't allow them to have the choice.
But the, no, you know what happened, is in the court cases, I pulled up the one, and, and what I found out is that the judge came to that determination because they supported the, the vote, but they said that because the defendant did not come in, or the plaintiff, excuse me, did not ask to review that, they only addressed what was in the court case that they had submitted. They didn't, so, there really is no answer there for those cases.
I like doing this, though, I don't have a problem asking them, I already have two more legal opinions being requested of them, so. I mean, I.
Just to clear it up, because I think it's the same thing, I don't know.
Tilly has a, a question of it, she has, you know, valid concern. I, I see, we cover our base.
Yeah.
You know, this much.
I guess, I guess, so I guess what I, I'm comfortable with what we have for information today, that's just me.
Yeah.
Harry?
I am too.
What about you?
I, I, I look at it as a sense of fairness if, if I were a judge looking at it. Georgetown is not violating any, is not violating the subdivision control law in any way.
So are you comfortable with the interpretation?
I'm with my pseudo-legal opinion.
Bob, yourself? So, so then the question, I mean, do you want to have town, so, so there's, there's.
Three V one.
Three and.
I, I wanna know what the question is, what is the question that's being asked?
To, to review, I want to, as the Attorney General recommended, that we seek town council review on the bylaw.
On that particular issue?
Yeah, so that we don't run into that trap that she is indicating could happen.
She, she's only indicating, because she didn't read our ordinance, she didn't, she did not read our ordinance.
So.
The whole audience was there in the amendment.
So the question, so the question to the board is, do, does the board want to engage town council to write, to look at it, to write a memo to resolve, you know, to his concerns?
How could she not read it?
I guess it's relatively easy question, where we have the town, where we have the Attorney General saying, consult town council.
Yeah, but see, the Attorney General only okayed the ordinance, and that's what it says right at the beginning. They only okayed the ordinance finally based on the advertising being properly done for the hearing.
Right.
That's their jurisdiction.
That's all they did, they didn't, they didn't weigh in on the content, the legal, the language of the.
Well, it sounds like they're weighing in a little bit.
He might say.
Oh, yeah.
Sounds like they're weighing in a little bit.
So.
He might agree.
Hey, be cautious, you better make sure that your, your language is not unconstitutional.
So I'd like to move this along, and what I'm hearing is, Harry, you, you, you're, you're, you're open to having town council?
I'm not adverse to it.
Okay, I, I'd just like to move it along.
It's okay with me, I mean, I, I don't think it's something.
So, John, can, can you?
Yep.
Oh, yeah, okay, thank you.
It's not short, Burt, though, if you have, you said you had two other questions?
There was one other.
Got two other questions that are going to town councils, John?
Uh, yeah, there's, those are already being worked on.
Okay, okay, good, that's, that's third in the queue.
And then the last item on the Planning Office is the review proposed recreational marijuana rules and regs.
Yeah, we'll get that right after stormwater. Right after the stormwater regs.
That's where we're moving to right now?
It's the last item on our agenda.
Okay, um. So this is what we are, we've already taken care of this one, the stormwater regs, or, oh, the marijuana, excuse me, excuse me.
Marijuana regs. Deal with one set of regs.
Yeah.
Ooh, that's on.
Yeah.
Wow.
Well.
This is what happens, we, 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 we want to do as much as we can, but.
Well, we put it off so long that we're stuck with it, and we gotta do it.
Well, wait a minute, we didn't put this one off at all, long at all, we just adopted the ordinance.
Right.
And this is one of those, we may adopt regulations, as in the stormwater, may get around to it.
And not for anything, I mean, even the Cannabis Control Commission, after they came out with their regulations, said that they will be revisiting in a year to two years for the delivery.
Guaranteed.
Because they have to deal with delivery, they have to deal with.
Correct.
Tea shops and, and in-use parlors.
Ongoing.
So you guys agree with my comments?
I'm sorry, I didn't read them, John.
You didn't read them?
What did it say?
I believe the foggiest of my aforementioned, I got it, one thing I didn't understand.
You guys must think I just wanna have fun. We're gonna roll, we're gonna roll them in.
Very, oh, very funny.
At the very end of this, there, it says companies seeking recreational marijuana licenses, but I don't see any in Georgetown. I don't even see one in Cambridge.
No.
Is it updated?
Well, yeah, no, those were in June, that was June.
It's gotta be updated.
Yeah, it's, it's updated on the computer.
Is, is it safe to say that this board definitely does need to do regulations for marijuana businesses, for our bylaw that we have now, that we just changed and created?
I don't think it's necessary, we do, that bylaw is so dead.
I don't think it's a 2018 goal, I don't see it as a 2018 goal.
I, I, I'm not concerned about it.
No, neither.
Because, yeah, the bylaws are pretty explicit, I think.
But there's a special permit, so, for me, I'm simplifying it, but I hang my hat on it.
You can always put the conditions if you miss out on the something or other.
You know, and it's the same thing with the stormwater regs, erosion control. I mean, everybody is practicing best management practices, except for that individual out there that happens to have a piece of heavy equipment in their backyard and wants to run a market.
Well, the thing about, the thing that I noticed about between Andover and some other communities about the storm drains, I think that's more important, and for the fa, fact that the remaining land that we have is very poor. So, I think that's gonna be critical, that we ought to pay attention to it.
And, and the calculations that are being used, even today, TR 22, TR 55 counts, the numbers that they're using, the, the, the curves that they're using haven't been updated since the 60s.
Yeah. We've been talking about this.
And, and, well, I know we have, and unfortunately, you know, everything.
No, I know.
And I'm glad that now we have the committee, well, we're further along than we ever have been, right?
There you go, there you go.
And progress is progress, it may be.
How you slice it.
Very, very slow, and why is it like, but it's progress?
On, on that note, is there anything in particular, John, that you need from the Planning Board tonight with regards to the rules? I'm, I'm saying we, we put them off for another day.
Yeah, and, and that's what I recommended, and, and because it really isn't a great set, a template, yet.
Well, correct.
Marijuana regs that we should, we could adapt for the town, so.
Okay.
We don't need to be the first one to admit that.
So.
And I think it's months out before towns can really do that. They have bylaws in place, which, you know, we know what we need to do to permit, and we just spent two and a half hours with our first victim.
We're getting there.
All right, so that takes care of the Planning Office, the only member concerned, so Bob's not gonna be here at the next meeting, we have the OSRD coming before us, special permit?
Yeah.
So, that's a four, that's a four out of five vote? So.
I better warn them.
Warn them. Just give them.
He can miss one.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
He can miss one, as long as he refuses it.
Right, but it's.
But I'm just, I, I wanna give the applicant the notice in advance.
Yeah.
That's a, that's a good thing.
That's all, that's all.
Yep.
Yeah.
It's an OSRD, they, they may say, look, I want him to be here to review it, I just wanna give them that.
Well, they kept putting it off, and putting off, maybe they're not ready.
Yeah, the other thing is, we're working pretty closely with Attorney Yikman on this particular submission, making sure all our teams will be up to it.
Okay.
It's getting late into the construction season, so.
It certainly is.
At this point, in this point in time, you know, you're talking about a spring groundbreaking.
What's doing with Daily Lane, that they?
Daily Lane's going along.
It isn't.
Oh, yeah. In big fashion.
Looking for a motion.
Chairman, a motion to adjourn, so.
Motion's been made and seconded to adjourn, seeing no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
John?